If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order.
Can I move down one?
If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence and then Ms. Sains is going to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the room?
Mr. Bradley? Mrs. Butcher-Collway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby? Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tinkell-Sains?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett? Here. Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. And had an opportunity to speak with both Chuck and David. They're both out of state traveling. So we anticipated their absence tonight. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last special council meeting of June the 6th. Those should be relatively brief. After you have a moment to look them over, would be glad to take a motion for approval.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. In your packet, you should have also received a copy of our latest check register. If you could indicate if you've received that. Thank you. And now we are at the part of the agenda for public comments. Do we have a sheet?
Bill's getting it for you, Tracy.
Come on up front, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. And you did. And she appreciates. Thank you. Yes, we have one person at this point signed up for public comment and that's Steve Price.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I have copies of news items to distribute, to the council, on my...
He is not. We'd be glad to get it tonight.
Thank you.
Riley not here either?
No. You can lay right here. He can pick it up. Thank you. There you go. That'll be good. Thank you.
Let's see now, I probably have one for myself.
Well, here's... Here.
Here, Stevie. Have mine.
You can use David's or Chuck's. There you go. You're welcome.
I follow the newspapers to try to keep up with what the town, the council, the mayor, the town attorney, code enforcement, everybody, Public Works are doing. And if you look at these two packages here of news items, most of it is news items. The... One news item that jumped out at me in the past couple of weeks was your decision to change healthcare providers. And it says here that news graphic says that you changed from Baptist Health Plan to United Healthcare. And when I read that, I said to myself, the town would be better off changing to pedestrian horticulture as the best provider of health. Pedestrian horticulture for every citizen, every public official, every elected official. Because the data included in these news items make clear that longevity, in places in the world where people enjoy longevity, are the same places where those same people engage in pedestrian horticulture. Well, in a lot of cases, well beyond the age of 100. You can look at the second, the most striking news item is page two of this packet, covered by the news article about your change of healthcare providers. You can read it if you want. The second packet is also health-related. I was sitting in front of the antique mall the other day and I saw a banner posted on a lamppost. I guess somebody from the town had posted this banner. It said, "Shop, dine, and play." And I assume that means in Georgetown. And that can't happen without mobility. And I think we assume that everyone has mobility and everyone needs mobility so that they can drive into Georgetown to shop, dine, and play. But I have serious doubts about that. And I'll express those same doubts to the Tourism Commission. Their idea is to make people mobile and pass them through a process whereby they spend money. And this second packet confronts me, confronts you, hopefully, should confront everybody with the stark reality that food supply and the very food supply that it would take to dine under the advice of this banner that's on the lamppost is not trustworthy. And if the food supply is not trustworthy, all of the shopping, dining, and playing, and mobility, and automobiles, and highway building is missing the goal of keeping people alive and healthy. And to assume that there's any priority other than a healthy food supply is, I think, to miss the mark. And the way to most assure that there's a healthy food supply is for each individual or family to be in charge of his own food production, which calls for homesteading. And the opposite of mobility, staying close to home, staying on one's feet, producing crops with no need for mobility, no need to shop, no need to dine, and no need to come to Georgetown to play. And I wanted to ask Mayor Prather a question. Mayor Prather, you quoted here in the newspapers, in the news graphic 6817. It's a news article about the town awarding an engineering contract for infrastructure. I assume that means under the Lanes Run Business Park, under, that means like sewer and electric. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And it says, they quote you, the newspaper quotes you, Mayor Prather, it says, "It's about how we train people with both the technical skills and the soft skills they have to have." And I wanted to ask you, what are soft skills?
Steve, typically, soft skills are referred to as knowing that you have to come to work every day, knowing that you have to come back to work after lunch, showing up for a job, being able to pass a drug screen.
Civilized skills.
Being a viable employee.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, right. So civilization or accommodation to society. I guess that's, those are the self-soft skills, right?
In that category, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, I'm leaving you, let me, another quote here, Mayor Prather, from you says, "We have more jobs than people who need jobs. If we don't solve that issue, it will stop our economic growth just as quickly as not having jobs will." And I'm just gonna read to, I'm gonna read to you from an essay I wrote, and I think it was about 2002. You spoke of expanding our economy. The concept of economy originally evolved from the concept of home, H-O-M-E, the word home. The word "economy" comes from the Greek "oikos," I guess the way you pronounce it, which means home, plus "neman," again, Greek, which means to distribute or manage. "I have found that concentrating my economic activities, horticulture and botany near home, that is, homesteading, is not only the best and quickest way to self-sufficiency, but also the way to harvest the most abundant and healthy crops." And finally, I want to read a, this is from another news graphic article about, no, yeah, it was, no, it was a new election of the Herald Leader, published, yeah, and written by Tom Eblin of the Herald Leader. This is about a surprise, and this is what you referred to in your quote, I think, here, Mayor Prather. We have more, now there's a surplus of jobs rather than a surplus of workers. And this news article says, "Part of the problem is that workers are often not where the jobs are. They also have complications, including transportation and childcare, to keep them from working or getting the training," which you referred to, Mayor Prather, the training, that's what you said it's all about, "from working or getting the training they need to qualify for jobs, for good jobs." In other words, mobility is the barrier to them being trained, or lack of mobility, I mean, it's a lack of their access to the training you want to give them and to the workplace you want to provide for them. And given that this is a barrier, mobility, I suggest to you that rather than promote a commerce based on mobility, our commerce should be based on immobility and public policy that encourages people to stay home, out of the car, on their feet, producing what they need near their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience for public comment? Next item on the agenda?
Go ahead.
Mayor's comments.
Be glad to hear it.
Go ahead to hear it, okay. Just a couple of things that I want to touch on quickly. And then I've asked Sheri and Bill to be here to give us an update on the improvements in the bathrooms at Ed Davis Park. It's really nice. And I'm gonna ask them to do, we've got some photographs that we want to show the council about how that project came together. But just a couple of quick things before that. I want to thank those council members who were in town and available to go to the event Saturday. Kinda know you were there, Marvin, you were there, I'm not sure who all got it.
Mark and Billy.
Billy got to go, and Mark got to go. And I knew that some folks were traveling and some were available, but I appreciate...
Well, I'll tell you what, it was a very uplifting moment when they put that flag up. They had all the veterans up there and they were playing. It was touching. And there were about 40-some people holding that flag.
There's several.
I mean, everybody stopped what they were doing just to watch it. So it was great.
Good. Well, thank you all for attending.
It's beautiful wine up there.
Yeah. And it's not a lot of wind to make it stick out there, does it? And they did say they would have a ribbon cutting in the near future. They didn't have that Saturday.
Okay. Typically, our Chamber of Commerce handles all ribbon cuttings and they have not joined the chamber yet. They've made no contact with the chamber yet.
Well, we had a flag flying then, so it didn't matter.
We have a flag. We don't have a chamber member.
It was a proud moment, Mayor.
Very proud.
It was a very proud moment.
It looked like it. I appreciated the video that you took.
You're welcome.
That got shared a lot of times.
We did. It was very nice.
I want to make sure you all seen this. It's been sent to you. But all of y'all have seen this flyer about the event tomorrow night. Community, Sky County Community Forum focused on alcohol and drug prevention, treatment, and recovery. Tomorrow evening at the Extension Office, a resource fair from 5:00 to 6:00. And I understand they've got some 20 or 30 different resource providers that are gonna have tables set up. A light dinner at 5:30 if anybody wants to grab a snack before it starts. And then the actual function is from 6:00 to 8:30. They are gonna put you to work. It won't just be talking heads. There will be a number of speakers to set context for you. But I think the plan is to ask all the attendees to break out in groups and actually come back with a couple of action steps. So it's a way to really sink your teeth into this.
I'll be there with Celebrate Recovery in our church. We'll have a table.
Good. So you're one of those 20 or 30 providers.
Yeah, we are.
Also, the following evening, see if I got my night right. Is that when the legislative forum is?
Wednesday.
Wednesday evening at the BCTC campus. Kentucky League of Cities is gonna provide an update on the past legislative session, issues of particular interest to cities. Most of y'all have read all that stuff and materials that have come from KLC. But it's a, J.D. Chaney will be here to present that and it'll be a good opportunity to ask questions or find out how the cities fared. And that starts at 6 o'clock at BCTC. Also, just wanted to mention to you, it's not something council has to vote on, but we have included in your packet for your information, a copy of the engagement letter on our auditor. We had already voted on it previously and I was authorized to execute the engagement letter. And you actually have a copy of the engagement letter now. So that much is, so that's in there for your information. And that's all I've got. Sheri, Bill, would you all like to give us a guided tour of the concession building at Ed Davis?
It's short and sweet. We didn't want to take up too much time. But it's been quite a project and it looks really well. We're very proud of it. I think anyone that comes over will enjoy it. Let me see if I can figure out how to work this thing.
Hit the right button.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. This is basically our finished product. As you can see, we also, in addition to what the city went in and did with the concession building, we've went in and put in a new scoreboard too, for the main court as well, because the scoreboard was no longer working. So we tied it all into the same project because it was the perfect time, because we had to run the electric and everything for the scoreboard. So it worked out to do all that at the same time. Once again, the scoreboard and the finished building. But this is some things we did upstairs. Compared to what it was, this is, you know, a tremendous improvement. We went in and we put shelving in. We put insulation in. And then we also put the plywood on it for the ceiling, because before it was an open ceiling without anything. So we went in and did all of that, did some shelving from up there and did several things. As you can see, the view from the scorebox looking out to the court now. And they've already started moving things back in. But if you'll notice, we did a lot of work with, it has been painted. And we have shelving up everywhere. Right there, if you look across the top of the doors there for concession service, you can see we even put shelving up there. We suspended it from the ceiling. So anyway, we could take out to give them extra storage and shelving. We went in and done that. This is the corner of the building where we backed up to the new wall for the restrooms. And we went in there and did shelving all along through there. There's also another chase that runs back to the hot water heater. And we've got shelving down through there as well. So we've tried to give them as much storage as possible. And we did, and the third photo coming in, and you can't see it on this picture, but there was an extra service wall there and we had that blocked up so that they could use that, because they never used it for service, because it was kinda to the side of the field where nobody was. And so we went ahead and did that to give us more storage room. So now they can put their refrigerators and things of that nature there. And once again, we went in and did more shelving.
I was trying to remember, Sheri, was that hole you blocked in behind the Pepsi dispenser or behind the refrigerator?
It's behind these refrigerators up here.
Do you remember the one we're talking about?
Yes, I do.
It was the size of one of these serving windows.
Yeah.
And it was locked to the side of the building.
Yeah.
And it impeded us of being able to put things there by shelving or the refrigerators or things. So we went in and had that blocked in.
Part of the reason, part of the reason we wanted you all to see all this is, when we went over to talk about the bathrooms, we spent a lot of time in the concession building. And we looked at every corner of it.
Absolutely.
And said, "What about here?" And "What do we do over here?" We looked to improve all elements of the building. And I think we, I think we did, we exceeded at least the expectations that I had. And I hope others feel the same way.
Something else that we did while we were in here, and you can kinda see there was a utility box on that very far one, is we did go in and put in more and more outlets as well, so that it, and they're on individual circuits.
Right. We have two head receivables, mid receivable, dedicated isolated circuit.
So that should enable them to be able to plug, anyone who uses it, to plug up anything without their electric and all. So when you buy all the pop rocks going, everything, you'll have the electrical support there. These are the two bathrooms. As you can see, they're a really nice size. We did take these pictures right before the floors got cleaned, so the floors look better. But as you can see, they're a really nice size. They're not small and crap in any way whatsoever. They are obviously handicap accessible. They look really great. I would encourage you to go over and actually look at them in person. The pictures don't do it justice. We did have to come in, as you can see, and we put that block wall all the way across the back. You can see here, that was where we started our addition for the restrooms. And then we brought it out. And I think the concrete was a little thicker than we thought when we were breaking it up. But it still worked out really well for us. This is a picture of where we put in some new electric on the park as well. One of the requests that night was to bring some of the electric over to the actual scores box and things of that nature. So we went ahead and did all that during this process as well. And here's kind of the finished product. From the back, you can see. And you can't really see what the challenge with the sidewalk was at this point. But it was very challenging because we went in and filled all that in. But I would say we had what, Bill? Two and a half?
About two, two and a half feet.
Two and a half, three feet that we had to go in and backfill, because it took all that concrete to make the ramp except where it should be and everything. So there was a lot of backfill in there. And then we went ahead and saw it. So it looks really nice. And they were open and functioning for the first stages.
Very good. It's awesome.
Any questions?
I have one. Is that building air-conditioned?
It is not air-conditioned. They have ceiling fans. All of our concession buildings are ceiling fans.
It's hard to do that with the windows open on air-conditioned, though. It's impossible.
Because we open and close those windows all the time.
We did.
The concession, the concession building at the Sefleye Family Aquatic Center is air-conditioned.
Can't tell.
You can't even tell it.
Really? Open and shut?
It's always out the county park, but you can't tell it.
Yeah, when you start opening and closing those windows. So all of our, like, used orange ones have those ceiling fans.
We did put space, in-wall space heaters in each of the bathrooms. So in the wintertime, we can at least knock the chill off.
Oh, cool. Okay.
We also did a lot of extra things, the thought processes that we tried to think ahead. So we did a lot of conversation, me and Bill did, about trying to make the best decisions we can make and be prepared for the future too, if we had the opportunity to maybe do something else in the future or expand. But Bill had a lot of really great ideas. His crew and his indoor maintenance crew really worked hard on the building and they did a really good job.
Well, I want to personally thank Billy. I know he spent a lot of time over there. And he was there, it seemed like, every day, three or four different times a day, or maybe more than that, late at night. And he was in the middle of everything. I just want to say thank you to Billy and Sheri for giving him that opportunity to run that show over there.
We appreciate y'all's faith in us and hopefully you're satisfied with the job.
I did ask Billy, did he stay on budget? Billy said, "I didn't know what the budget was, so I don't know."
I didn't tell him that part, Marvin. When he'd bring in, he'd bring in some of the bills. I, it was just a lit yes or no, up or down.
There you go. We haven't found out yet, but we will, obviously. But it's probably, I'm not worried about it.
Very grateful that it's done.
Yes, it's done. It looks great.
It's done. It, you will be...
More than what we'd anticipated, honestly.
More than what we expected. The other good news is we used some local contractors. The Persleye Family Business laid all the block and they've already done some other work.
Blacktop's been worked over there.
For Parks and Rec. The cause, we learned of their availability. So we've learned about local contractors that we can use. This was not done, it was done quickly, but it wasn't done in a hurry. When you walk around the building with Sheri or Bill, even the way we routed the plumbing venting made sense. The way we vented the bathrooms make sense. This has been well thought through. And council made a firm commitment to the folks at Ed Davis. And when we didn't get bids, our Parks and Rec crew went into motion. And I just, I wanted them to come show us what they had done and let them be here to thank them, so.
We might be looking at them down the road for some more small jobs. Bill?
Bill, anything you'd like to add? I do want to say that we want to thank, like, Public Works and all, you know, they helped us out tremendously with the job.
The inmates too, I understand.
Yes, the inmates.
Trusty crew from the jail helped a bunch on this.
The group effort, it sounds like to me.
And we had some really nice skilled workers that were there working with us. And it was, it was definitely a group effort and it looks really good.
I just wanted to let you know, it is functional and we have had the plumbing and electrical and building inspection. We're not 100% complete, but, you know, we don't need heaters and we don't need hand dryers to function. And those are the two major items. We have another coat of paint to do. And then caulking and painting the service windows, we've got that to do. And that's the major item. We've got a few smaller items. But the main reason I wanted to mention, I wanted to make sure that y'all are aware of everyone that it took to make this happen. And obviously, Sheri, our Parks and Rec Director, our Parks and Rec Board, my staff, the Parks and Rec ground staff, Public Works staff, everybody had a part. The jailer, his staff, and the folks that participate in his work program. Willie Gossi with Ed Davis Community, Inc., Ken Wilson Painting and his subcontractors, the building electrical and plumbing inspectors, Derringer Construction, which did the water and sewer service, brought it to the building, Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service. They helped us from the start. And there again, I hope I haven't missed anybody. If I have, I apologize. But without these groups and probably a couple that I've missed, there's no way we could have done it in the timeframe that we've done it.
It's sort of like a community coming together to make a project core part of the community.
Thank you, Bill.
It really is. And while Bill and Sheri are here, I think it's important to note that, going back to last summer, we've now paved the basketball courts and have them finished in the bright colors. We've finished the bathrooms in the concession building, the other electric improvements in the park. And we've also signed the contract to pave the parking area at the front of Ed Davis that we promised. Hamilton and Hinkle honored the bid price they gave us last fall of $22,000. So that will be done by the end of June. So I think that our demonstrated progress within Ed Davis... So I think that our demonstrated progress within Ed Davis Park has.
Been met.
I think we've done a great job. And I hope that when we visit over there, everybody feels proud of it.
Just in addition to that, we are putting up a new pretty sign. We're doing, working on the graphics with Letterman right now. So we figured the park looked brand new, so we're going to put up a nice new park sign.
That is awesome.
Yeah, maybe in that grassy area, the center of where we're going to.
And where your company in the parking lot, yes, that's where we're talking about.
Good.
Great job.
I think, thank you.
Give him a hand. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Set a goal, set a goal and got it done.
And got it done. Let's see here, moving on with the rest of the agenda now. We have a, the next item on the agenda under City Attorney is second reading of two ordinances that are linked together. These are both the property, the Giles property. The first ordinance will be a voluntary annexation ordinance for the Giles property that Ms. Tackett has sponsored. And following that, we'll have second reading of the zoning ordinance for the Giles property. Anything you need to add, Bruce, or are we ready to read?
Ready to read.
An ordinance related to the annexation of certain real property consisting of a total of 9.9634 acres, more or less owned by Ralph C. Giles Jr. lying along and south of the Georgetown bypass, McCollin Circle, west of U.S. Highway 25 and bounded on the east by Eterwood subdivision, and on the south by Snyder adjacent to the city limits of Georgetown and Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, one, annexes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of the property owners in accordance with KRS 81A 412, 9.9634 acres, more or less owned by Ralph C. Giles Jr. lying along the south with Georgetown bypass, McCollin Circle, west of U.S. Highway 25 and bounded on the east by Eterwood subdivision, and on the south of Snyder adjacent to the city limits of Georgetown and Scott County, Kentucky. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read for the first time May 22nd, 2017. Publicly read second time, June 12th, 2017.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made by Ms. Tackett. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for either the sponsor or Mr. Langford? If not, shall we call the roll?
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Tingleseames?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That, that carries and is passed. So we'll move now to the zoning activity.
An ordinance related to changing the zone for certain real property consisting of a total of 9.9634 acres, more or less owned by Ralph C. Giles Jr. Said property situated along and south of McCollin Circle and west of Eterwood subdivision, and 25.97 acres more or less owned by Richard and Connie Snyder. Said property situated by 270 Eter Lane in Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, amends the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map to show a change in the zoning classification for certain real property consisting of 9.9634 acres lying along and south of McCollin Circle and west of Eterwood subdivision in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky. From A1 agricultural to R2 medium density residential. And 25.97 acres situated at 270 Eter Lane in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky. From R1A residential to R2 medium density residential. Provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read for the first time, May 22nd, 2017. Publicly read the second time, June 12th, 2017.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
I see.
Ms. Conway with a second. Bruce, anything to add?
Have nothing unless Matt does.
I'm here to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate you being here. Any questions for Matt, Bruce, Connie, Andrew? Great. Shall we call the roll?
Mrs. Butcher-Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingleseames?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Here's Mr. Langford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Yes, sir.
May I be of duty?
You may.
Sir.
You can go.
Yes, sir.
No, we want you to stay.
You know what? Once he's on our clock, we can't afford him.
No. Let him go.
We can afford him if he's sitting here waiting on somebody else's clock. Item C on your agenda is, we've talked about this at length, but it's the first reading of the amendment to the garbage ordinance sponsored by the Public Works Committee, Ms. Conway and Mr. Thompson.
An ordinance amending various provisions of the Chapter 19, Article 2 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances regarding solid waste collection and disposal. Summary, amends Section 19-16 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to include waste from portable toilets in the definition of hazardous waste. Amend Section 19-20 to revise the rates for residential garbage collection to require payment for an additional $5 per month per additional Herbie Kirby for residents who request more than one Herbie. The existing $15 standard residential rate for a single Herbie is not being charged. Provides a maximum of three Herbies per dwelling unit and requires a minimum of 12 months' use for additional Herbies. Allows customers to purchase an additional Herbie within the 12 months preceding the effective date of the ordinance to request a pro-rata refund of the price. Amends the rate structure for commercial Herbie collection to eliminate the classification-based system and replace it with a rate matrix based on the number of collection times per week and number of Herbies collected. Limits the number of commercial Herbies to five per business. Allows the Director of Public Works to limit the number of commercial Herbies per partial or to require a business or property owner to seek private dumpster collection when necessary. Clarifies that customers over the age of 65 must use a single 65-gallon Herbie in order to obtain the $8 reduced residential Herbie rate and will be charged the same rate as standard residential Herbie customers if the customer requests the 96-gallon container, including additional charges for additional Herbies. Amends Section 19-21 to allow customers with a medical condition making compliance impractical to request a waiver from the requirements that Herbies be kept behind the front facade of a residence and/or that limits the time during which customers may place Herbies at the curb. Provides that unless specified in a citation, violations of the nuisance provisions of the solid waste codes must be remedied within 24 hours of notice. Repels the enforcement provision contained in Section 19-24. Amends Section 19-25 to make violations of the article subject to enforcement through the Georgetown Code Enforcement Board ordinance and subject to the standard penalty schedule. Provides for appeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324. Introduced and publicly read for the first time, June 12th, 2017.
Thank you. That would constitute first reading. And we'll plan on having second reading. Unless something changes, we'll plan on having second reading at our next council meeting. If there are any questions between now and then, please be, feel free to get a hold of the committee, or me, or Andrew, or Mr. Bruce. Yes, sir, Marvin.
I have several questions, in no particular order. The first question is, is the customers that are over age 65?
Yes, sir.
If they currently have a large container, but they're paying the reduced rate, are we going to have to switch those out?
According to this ordinance, we would.
And we have a record, we have records of who has what size containers and who's being, I'm assuming we know who's being charged. Do we have the tools to be able to, to go in and manage that?
We think we do. But between, between communication, it requires communication between Public Works and the Water Company, which is doing our billing. But Robert believes that he does have a handle on that.
Okay.
And we, the committee kicked this around for a while, Mark, on this particular issue. And the consultants came down real strongly on the point that for seniors, if we, if we, if we want to give a senior discount and we want to treat seniors with the respect that we do. They said, most cities make the assumption that a senior produces less trash, which is why the rate is significantly less. So we took their advice and figured that we would keep that senior discount. But per the consultant's recommendation, make it of a size that fits that fee schedule. The other flexibility that the committee wanted to add, we wanted our workers to have complete flexibility from the council to go up and help somebody bring their garbage down from the house. We have done that occasionally in the past, but we haven't really had, it hadn't been written into our ordinance.
So this way here, we're not in trouble going up there and doing that if one gets hurt or slipped. We're still under.
We've actually written it into the ordinance. And all they have to do is get a hold of Robert and talk that through with them. And we will add that service for a senior. We didn't want to be in a position of taking anything away from a senior, but we thought we could actually add a service if, if they truly had that physical limitation in need.
Is there, is there, I'm sorry.
And we also tried to give them some flexibility. You heard language in the summary about everybody keeping their trash can behind their house and out of sight. For certain folks, elderly folks that may have a certain problem with that, we'll work with them. So again, we tried to give seniors more flexibility with the ordinance.
Do we have a way to find out approximate or precise how many age 65 or older that we were going to ultimately, they're going to have to make a decision whether they want the large container or the small container?
You know, I haven't.
We have an idea of how many?
Robert can probably get us that, Mark, before second reading. We did ask him to do some research on, best he can tell, around 10% of our customers, of our residential customers, have a second Herbie. So it's not quite as many as I thought.
My recollection from the presentation given by our consultants was that we had an unusually high number of persons who were getting the senior discount. I think it was upwards of 20%.
Our, the consultants were frankly flabbergasted at the magnitude of the senior discount that we had. They said it, they'd never seen it done in another city quite to that degree.
Is there any way before our second, the second reading, then that we can get two different numbers? One for how many people have the second Herbie? That would pay the normal rate. And then how many people above the age of 65 that have a large trash, or Herbie at the present time, that are going to have to make a decision whether they want to keep that and pay a higher rate or go to a, a smaller container to maintain the current rate?
The other, the other, there will be, people will have that decision, Mark. And then they'll also have a decision about whether or not they want to keep their additional residential Herbies. And it's a, it's a decision point for them. If they want to control cost, we've given them a mechanism to do that. That's particularly true with the, with the, the commercial Herbie makers, where, where we give the business the tools to manage what that ultimate bill is. But we'll see if Robert can get you those two pieces of information for this council meeting. Any other questions?
I do. I have on the, on the, on the business side of it. Have, has the business community been talked about what, what we're getting ready to do with this? Have they been, have they been informed that they're going to have their rates probably doubled and tripled?
I think whether their rates double and triple or not is going to depend on their own decisions about how many Herbies they have. We, we have notified every customer that uses a Herbie. And if you'll recall, when we started the process for the consultant, which was more than a year ago, I think we, we talked then about part of the purpose of the consultant and the process and the public surveys, and the mail surveys and the electronic surveys, was to be a part of a communication effort that this was under consideration. It's probably the longest lead time that I've known of. If, if the question is, have we done a mailing to every one of our customers with this rate? We have not.
But has, has there been any feedback from the business community?
None that I'm aware of.
So there's been no communication? Other than knowing that this was on the table, they haven't seen or been aware of the metrics of what is going to change?
Other than the fact we've talked about it for a year and a half and had the consultant's report, I don't know how much people have listened.
We'd have to ask Robert.
We have, we have certainly put the information out there for a year and a half.
Has the committee, have you all been to talk to any of the businesses to, and have you addressed, how are you going to do Main Street? Where it gets picked up frequently and they don't have a place for additional cans and things like that to cut down to a one, one time a week? Has that been talked about?
That's a decision they have to make, whether how many times, how many containers, the actual businesses. But weren't they going to be made aware of plenty of time to?
And Robert will have to, in particular, the, the very difficult collection areas that we have. And we do have a couple that provide real challenges.
Yeah.
Robert's going to have to do some, some work on that. We're not.
Do you think some of that work should be done before we actually pass it? Get the work done and talk to them how, Main Street's probably going to be the one that's the most cumbersome to maybe handle. Because they don't have storage, they have room out front and stuff like that. But should some of that be done before we officially pass it?
Well, I'm.
And then with the businesses being the ones that handle it, the, the price may not change, but how they handle it might come about differently, a different suggestion that may reflect differently than to the rest of the businesses?
Sure. And I'd be, I'm receptive to suggestions about how we do that. Other than talk about it for a year and a half or two years.
Well, talking here, everybody here doesn't get, the people that are out there don't always hear what we say here. So I just.
Well, unless we go door to door, I'm not sure. What, what would you recommend?
Going through, well, Main Street would be the, the Main Street, I think, is one of the most.
We can, we can, Lori can handle, she gets back tonight from vacation. And she's already having monthly celebrate Georgetown meetings. So the downtown, between Lori and Robert, I'm confident we can get downtown.
Okay.
I'm not sure how we get effective communication. We can let the chamber know and they could probably put it in a newsletter.
That would probably help some too.
And that would at least reach 600 businesses. We can do that.
Probably not all of them on garbage pickup either.
True.
But how many, how many businesses, do we know how many businesses are? That's a good question.
Robert's got all this information. It's hard for me to pull it out. But we talked and talked, you know, if.
Robert fully intended to be here. And his son played baseball at seven o'clock and his wife's out of state.
I understand.
So I kind of said, Robert, you can have the night off.
Because he, he might end up in a Herbie.
Part of the reason was, we knew tonight was first reading. And that if there were really tough council questions, it would come at second reading. So he's made a firm commitment to be here next time.
He'll have the answers then.
Well, I should have been here last time and then I could have asked the questions last time, but I wasn't. But I do have another question. This is.
But I do, I will work with the chamber and see if they can help us.
Give some feedback. Because the prices are, I mean, I'm not saying maybe the prices are not out, out of kilter of what they should be. But what I am saying, you are sending to all the businesses in town that do have garbage pickup. You are doubling to tripling whatever they are currently paying, unless they're only going to do one can a week and that's it. Then you're not.
If they don't manage it, the cost will go up.
But here's the question on the cost. On the page that has the, the matrix for the businesses, you've got, at the bottom, you've got, you've got one Herbie, it's $20. And that's one time a week. And if you have two, it's 40. Okay. So if it's 20 there, and then you turn to the next page and it says each additional Herbie is 5, 10, 15, 20, 25. That's one, two, three, four, five Herbies that you could have. And it says, commercial customers would be limited to a maximum of six, or five. Shouldn't it actually be six based on that? Because you get one Herbie at $20, one time a week. Then if you choose one time a week, you could go 5, 10, 15, 20, 25. Add to that.
Those are additional Herbies. So you got the first Herbie.
Exactly, at 20. And it says, but customers shall be limited to a maximum of five. So actually, that's a maximum of six.
One plus four is five.
I know. One, two, three, four, five. I see five. I see five.
Five is the weekly frequency, not the number of Herbies.
Right here. For each additional Herbie, it'd be cost $5, $10, $15, $20. That's, that's five Herbies?
No.
No?
No, that's one Herbie being picked up several times that week.
You go back to the, you go back to the previous page.
Here.
That is the number of pickups.
First Herbie.
One.
Not number of Herbies, number of pickups per week.
My, I have one Herbie.
And I get paid $20.
But if I have it picked up five days, it's going to cost me that much money.
But if I have one Herbie and I want.
No, this is frequency.
Okay, if I'm going to pick up one time a week and, but I want.
Two Herbies.
Five Herbies.
Five Herbies.
What's going to be my cost?
$129 if you do it five days.
No, I'm not doing it five days. I'm doing one pickup and I'm going to end up having five cans.
You're going to have a total of four extra.
$45. Twenty for the first one.
Uh-huh.
And then the, the $25 surcharge for the other four. So it's five.
Doesn't a 20 include the first one? Because if I just have, that's 20, that's a, that's a Herbie. It's one pickup, one Herbie.
You're looking down, you're looking down the line, is what you're doing. You shouldn't look down the line. You get twen, you get $20, and then you go, you immediately skip down to the next line, five.
Is this it?
Yes.
The next line?
So you can get four more of those.
Okay.
So five, four more times, you get a total of five Herbys.
So what you're telling me, this sheet should be on top of this sheet? Are you looking at it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I can't figure it out. There's some other people out here, there are businesses that won't be able to figure it out without some explanation before they get the bill and, and figure out what's going on with it.
The other thing that we can do to, to make this very clear for businesses is, in the ordinance, we simply listed the way the matrix would work.
Mm-hmm.
We can go ahead and draw the matrix out.
I think that would be a good idea.
And, and fill in every block. That's the only thing that's missing here.
It really is, and that way somebody can take the sheet and look easily on it and say, here's what I'm going to do.
This is what I want, this is what I need.
Exactly.
So that clarity.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Because if anybody else looked at the ordinance, they're going to think the very same thing that I did, not realizing.
That's something that we could do administratively, though. I mean, we could have, the ordinance is accurate. We could have a matrix that says, here are all the pickups, here are your numbers.
The materials that we present the public need to be real clear, and the fully fleshed out matrix would make that easier.
Yes.
I agree with that, yes.
And as said, as we said before, if you've got one Herbie residential, your rates are the same.
They do not change.
Actually, I think it goes down.
Well, no, not on 15.
Commercial, oh, residential, sorry.
One, if you get one commercial Herbie once a week, your rate goes down.
Two dollars.
Under this plan.
It was two dollars, I think.
When you start adding Herbys, it's going to get paid.
The main thing is, too, we don't want the set out. You know, if you need two Herbys, you need to pay for two Herbys instead of having one full, and this stuff's coming out the top, and there's boxes and everything sitting beside it, which just looks terrible.
Karen, you remember a year or so ago, few years ago, when we, we decided we weren't picking up the stuff on the side? This is what we're trying to get out of right here, so we're, we're getting either in a Herbie, and also.
The businesses, not, not as much.
No, no.
What you're doing with the businesses, you're limiting, you're limiting your trips of the backing up, like, and I'm a prime example of it. They come three times a week, two, two cans each time they come. They could come one time a week and pick up those same, just have more cans, which is what we're leading to on doing this.
It's kind of saving on fuel.
But giving you the option.
Right.
But also, we're also going to have, each quarter, we're going to have a pickup day for.
Extra.
Extra that they do get throughout the first quarter, second quarter, on a certain time, we'll pick stuff outside the can.
For all public.
For all public.
For everybody.
It, it looks like there's actually an, an incentive to have your garbage picked up less often.
Mm-hmm, right.
That's what we're hoping.
Which is a.
Well, yeah.
Which saves the gasoline and the manpower.
Which saves them money, too.
Saves them, saves us.
Right.
And so on, the businesses that they go down, because everybody, all the businesses get picked up three times a week, which is not really necessary, which is what we're fearing for.
A lot of them complain about the fact that they have no option to just get once a week picked up.
See, that would have been, that would have been fine, needing more cans, but that would have been fine. So on the cans, or they, then we just call and the business will call and provide, the public works will provide the extra cans?
Yes.
Try and make it as simple as we can. Of course, it doesn't seem quite simple until we get it all laid out, but.
Well, it'll take a while to, to smooth it out, but I really would like to have the businesses feel like, to have the businesses a little more informed before we actually pull the trigger, because it's going to be a little awkward in the beginning, and then when you get your bill and you realize it's, it's doubled or tripled from what you've been paying, then, so.
Now, we did talk about some of the restaurants got all this food and stuff they're throwing in, we don't know where we can go once a week on them.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mark.
I should have asked this question first, instead of my other two questions first. If, if this passes in present form at second reading, will we have a grace period there, or is this going to take effect immediately? Or will we have a grace period so we can get out and communicate what every homeowner or business that will be impacted?
I think the idea, Mark, has been to, we would not want to begin this before July 1st. And I don't know if we can even implement it that way.
We could easily, I was going to say that, easily write in now a, an effective date for all, or, or any of the provisions.
And pass the ordinance, but make the effective date of implementation.
So everybody can get on the grid.
And if you all would like to consider that tweak to the ordinance, would that substantially change the ordinance?
We can do it right now, we can write it right in there. I mean, we can just scratch out that last paragraph and say.
That would be better for not only for, well, public works will need it to make the changes and the shift over, and, and the businesses and the public will need it to, to get accustomed to it, too, I think, so.
So how long, how, Mark, what would be your thought or the committee's thoughts on?
I'd say first of August, that's five weeks.
Here's my question, let's go back and use my two examples. I'll use me, I'll use myself as an example. I ordered a second Herbie last week, and it was delivered. And I know I'm not the only one in this community that has two Herbys, and I don't mind paying that extra charge, I don't. But my question is, is everybody that has that second Herbie ought to have either a letter, some type of communication sent to them?
It's going to.
Of what, and the same thing with those customers that are over the age of 65, that have a large container, that's going to have a, it's going to have to make a decision. Each one of those homeowners, in my opinion, should get some type of communication from the city. And businesses the same way. If there's a business out there that's going to be impacted, then that business needs to have a letter or some type of communication. My question is, is can you get that done in 30 to 60 days? I don't know. I just think we need to, if this passes in present form, I think communication's critical.
Me, too.
Well, we, the council learned the hard way about three years ago, that if you, about four years ago.
Longer than that, actually.
Four years ago.
Rush into it.
That if you change the way we deliver an essential service, and we do it too quickly, it has a bad outcome. So I think, I think the Public Works Committee has, has worked on this issue as much as any committee has worked on an issue.
It's hard to shoot.
It, it is, but I think we'd be, we, we obviously want to do this well, and if doing it well requires a lot of advanced communication, we're willing to build that time in for whatever we think is reasonable. And August 1st may not be enough, Marvin.
Well, that may not be.
Because particularly to Mark's point, if folks have to make a decision, they need to get the information, have time to make the decision. And some folks don't make this their weekly priority, let's face it, this isn't the top thing. So maybe would September 1 be reasonable for us to undertake something like that?
And I think what we can do is, we can say that Section 2, which is where all the rates are, and the language about the senior, the 90/60 gallon versus 65 gallon, we could simply delay implementation of that particular section. All the rest of the stuff with the nuisance regulation, the definition of hazardous waste, all that could go into effect upon passage and publication, there's really nothing to it.
Well, that would, that's up to the council's comfort level, because you are the ones that.
I have no problem just taking it all at one time, but if you want to pass some of it.
It's, it's probably simpler to do it.
Yeah, I, I would just say, if we're going to postpone any of it, let's just postpone the whole thing till we get it said. And Mayor, you said in our meeting that you didn't want to rush this. You want to make certain that we don't have the issue we had a few years ago.
That's right.
And we want to make certain everybody knows what's going on. And Mark, I have an extra Herbie, too. Either I pay that $5, or have them come and pick it up, and I'm going to keep my Herbie, you know? And that's the option they've got. They don't have to, but we're trying to keep the community, you know, it's nothing worse than going through the neighborhood, and you've got garbage everywhere, and you've got another community, you've got nothing but straight line Herbys, you know, that's what it looks, should look like, and that's what we're after.
Why don't we, if you are comfortable, I think you've made some good points. What if we set the implementation date of the ordinance for September 1? And when we come back for second reading, we will have worked with Robert on a communications plan, and what that might look like, and when letters could go out, and into what groups they'd go to.
That's a good idea.
Robert can answer a whole lot of the questions that we probably, number wise, we just.
Yeah, I think this is a great example of where we can take first reading and actually improve an ordinance prior to its second reading. Okay, well, if you all are comfortable with that, then.
It's fine.
We will, we'll proceed with second reading, but make implementation effective September.
The revised ordinance is going to read, this ordinance shall take effect September 1, 2017, after its passage and publication according to the law and the summary will be revised to state decision.
Okay.
Good.
Good outcome, thank you all. Item D on the agenda, and I didn't dream it would take this long to get to this point on the agenda, but we have our, our friends back from Georgetown College, and I think we have prepared a resolution supporting conflict-free minerals. Would you all like to come to the podium? We have to embarrass you, we can't let you sit in the audience.
You're going to help us on this garbage thing, you know?
We're nodding our heads.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So Andrew has worked on a resolution and provided it to the council.
They've seen it also.
And you've seen it all, good.
All right, does that look fine to you all?
It does, yeah.
All right.
Please.
Resolution for City of Georgetown supporting conflict-free minerals, whereas the conflict in the Dominican Republic of Congo, DRC, is the deadliest conflict since World War II, with the International Rescue Committee determining that over 5.4 million civilian deaths have occurred as a consequence of the armed conflict in eastern Congo. Whereas armed groups in the DRC have earned hundreds of millions of dollars through the illegal exploitation of conflict minerals, namely tin, tantalum, tungsten, and gold, that are essential in all consumer electronic products and other products such as jewelry and automobiles. Whereas armed groups vying for control of mineral resources in Congo blatantly commit human rights violations such as rape and the recruitment of child soldiers. Whereas Section 1502 of the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act signed into law in 2010 and implemented in 2012 requires that companies publicly traded in the U.S. submit an annual report to the Securities and Exchange Commission disclosing whether their products contain gold, tin, tantalum, or tungsten from Congo or an adjoining country, and what steps they are taking to determine whether those materials are supporting armed groups. Whereas initial reviews of progress just four years after the implementation of Section 1502 of the Dodd-Frank Act are indicating early signs of success, including but not limited to, multi-stakeholder teams have assessed 408 mines in eastern Congo on conflict and child labor issues, 379 of which have passed the assurances. According to records from Congo's North Kivu Provincial Government, a record amount of certified conflict-free tin and tantalum was exported from the province in 2016. 1,550.2 tons of tin worth $11,738,438, and 1,121 tons of tantalum worth $35,901,748. 79% of miners working in tin, tantalum, and tungsten mines assessed by IPIS in 2015 were not working under the threat of armed groups. There has been a sharp increase of activity amongst technology companies to escalate reform efforts such as the production of the world's first fully conflict-free product that contains clean Congolese minerals. Whereas the City of Georgetown budgets funds each fiscal year to purchase electronics and other goods containing these minerals, and whereas the city wishes to thank the members of the Georgetown College Conflict Free Campus Initiative for promoting awareness of this issue, for encouraging the city council to act and for aiding in drafting this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, that the City of Georgetown supports electronics companies and other industries taking the necessary steps to remove conflict minerals from their supply chains, and instead of sourcing conflict-free minerals for their products and contributing to livelihood projects for Congolese mining communities, and that the city commits to consider whether electronics products contain conflict minerals in future purchasing decisions, and when feasible and lawful, favor companies that are working to source or have sourced verifiably conflict-free minerals for their products. This resolution was approved by the vote of the Georgetown City Council, City of Georgetown, on the 12th day of June 2017.
Thank you. That is the resolution that council asked that we prepare. There are motion for its approval.
Motion.
Motion, thank you. And Ms. Conley with the second. Any questions for our guest? Any comments that you all need to make, or would like to make?
I don't think so, thank you, although.
They're smiling over there.
Then we're ready for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Jeff, point me up.
Yeah, I just like to say, but we, we had talked, everybody's been kind of emailing back and forth, and they've been very persistent.
Yeah.
And I think that is key to getting a goal accomplished. So I have to congratulate you all on that, and I know you all are very passionate about it, and especially as college students, it's neat to see that you can make a difference, even when you're in school, so congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ladies, and we'll be glad to provide a copy of this tomorrow, if you need it, we can even dress it up a little bit.
Let him put it in a frame or something.
Yeah.
We'll be glad to provide that for you.
Karen, you got a frame at your place?
No, I don't. I think they have some at your place.
Yeah, they got some at my place.
All right, well, thank you, ladies, very much. Sorry to make you wait so long.
Have a great evening.
Dig up the old annual in '71, '72, and '73, I'm in it, Georgetown College.
Item 8 on your agenda is a municipal order approving a contract for Holly Hawk Stormwater Project. We've talked about this one for some time. It looks like, and you'd never know what actually happened, but where this wing wall is severely cracked and threatening to collapse, is right across Holly Hawk from one of the entrances to the Georgetown College parking lot. If I were guessing, I would guess that a big old snowplow that was cleaning the lot.
Pushed her over.
Pushed right over and out, clunk. But anyway, it, it needs fixing, and we have gotten prices, it is budgeted, and there is an MO approving, we got bids, the labor bid is $80,885. You'll recall that we previously bid out materials cost on a per unit basis, and we anticipate that the stone and asphalt materials will cost about $10,000, so total cost of the project, $90,885, which is a part of our current year's budget. So I just read the municipal order, basically.
Yeah.
Bam.
So is there a motion for approval?
Motion, second.
Thank you.
Motion ain't seconded.
He said motion, we said it together. He said motion, we said it together.
We said it together.
Motion, second.
Karen, you got out, talk that time.
I think we got that one covered. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item eight on your agenda is, you know, we promised you all a mid-year budget amendment as we see what our progress is midpoint, see what we can fund and how our revenues are going, but we always have cleanup items at the end of a fiscal year. And Stacy insists, and I agree, that we always clean this up with a budget amendment to get everything balanced again before we finish out our fiscal year. So with that in mind, Stacy, if you'd like to kind of walk through your changes, and then we'll read the ordinance by summary.
Okay, I won't go over every single line item, but the overall picture is with all of the changes to the general fund, transfers and from other funds, the net additional impact on the general fund is about $49,000 and change. What I did was obviously went back and looked at everything we've approved since our mid-year budget amendment that we had not previously funded and took care of those things, which included the radio system consultant, a little additional funding we needed for a flow line, the flow line contract for the business park, and the cardon roof repair the city had agreed to pick up on the front end, the additional repairs that went beyond the grant balance. In addition to that, I kind of went through the budget just to see if there were any line items that looked like they might need to be fixed in an amount more than $10,000, which is all I have, and the mayor has the authority to make. So to help offset this, I did look at some of our smaller revenue accounts, building permit revenue, CMRS, which is our state dispatch revenue, electrical inspection revenue from the county, and surplus equipment sale, were all already over budget. So I went ahead and increased those revenues for those. As you can see, general government professional services, that mainly stemmed from, we had an architect who had to help us with the bidding on the cardon roof. If you all may know, we went through quite a few iterations of that bid to follow state guidelines, and we had to have an architect help us with that design and bid. That was $9,000 all on its own, and then just some other things that have come up throughout the year. We always ding that account when something unexpected comes up. Couple of overtime accounts that needed to be fixed, and had to fix the KLC, the variable rate debt. It was about this time last year, when I was already in the middle of preparing the budget, they changed the structure of those loans a little bit, so the fees went down. We no longer had the letter of credit fees, but that meant the interest rate went up a little bit, so I had to balance those out. So we were a little bit under budget, but I had to raise the interest and lower the admin fees on those budgets. You'll see on business park, I brought in the county's half of revenue. We had not initially accounted for that for this portion of the engineering cost that we've recently approved. Couple of grants that I brought in, a KLC workers' comp grant, and then the VOCA grant. At the time we got everything kicked off and going, it ended up only being half of a year, so I reduced that from $50,000 to $25,000, just because we didn't quite get up and running until April on that one. A little bit of salary and overtime adjustment in cemetery fund, and that's about it, like he said, just to bring in a couple of things you'd already approved and catch up some cleanup items that were beyond mine and the mayor's limit to be able to transfer money for.
One of the things we cleaned up too, there's a small pension adjustment.
Oh, yes.
And we're dealing with a couple of pension issues. We've always had the liability, if someone retired and they have a lot of sick leave accumulated, they earn retirement time for them, and we don't budget for it because we're not sure when people are going to retire. So when we have to pay that sick time, the retirement, that creates an unexpected expense for us sometimes. The other thing that we're beginning to see pieces of, and we think we'll see potentially more of it in the future, even with the legislation that's changed, the spiking issue that the General Assembly took up to discourage people from, if you spike, our retirement system is based on a five-year high salary, and if in the last five years of your career, if you don't have a legitimate...
Like a promotion.
Job change or promotion, if your salary increases over 10%, it's called spiking. And the last employer that calls to that spiking gets the bill for the pension cost for the rest of their life.
Wow.
All at once.
And we have to front pay it.
Karen, don't be paying Kevin too much here, ladies.
He's lucky he gets paid it all.
Interestingly, where we have tripped over this a time or two, both city and county, is we have just a very small handful, there can now only be two or three firefighters that work for both fire departments. They can do it, it's legal, and I wouldn't, my constitution wouldn't handle it, but they can do it, but if they did that in the last five years of their employment, it creates spiking incident. So we just have to ask more questions and be more careful now, or we will be responsible for spiking payments.
She weak.
Between city and a county, I don't know, we're juggling a handful of these and appealing a couple of them that we think are real promotions, and so we're doing our due diligence to try and get through this. What you all will need to know is after July 1st of this year, we will not be asked to pay those additional fees. For an employee who starts after August the 1st, what the outcome will be is that employee will get the lower of the two retirements rather than us getting the bill. So it was not the intention of the legislature, they wanted to address spiking, but there were unintended consequences that cities and counties are tripping over, and that's now been fixed effective July 1st, but we're having to pay a little out.
So unless they go backwards, which is always possible, if I'm somebody who retired two years ago and they decide to send us a spiking bill, but anybody who retires after July 1, we won't be responsible for, so.
Nobody returns.
The majority of the invoices you see here are sick leave. I'm sure when we have our mid-year amendment for next year, like he said, we've got some invoices that we don't expect to have to pay till after July 1, but we're trying to resolve those. You may see a similar adjustment mid-year if we have to pay those, so.
Yeah, and those will be slightly painful when they come. So are we ready for the summary, Stacy?
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. Summary, general fund, prior year revenues increased by $49,930.76. Intergovernmental revenue is increased by $132,377.50. Building permit revenue is increased by $28,500. Other revenues are increased by $8,369. General government expenses are increased by $6,500. Police department expenses are increased by $55,278.68. Fire department expenses are increased by $32,428.72. Dispatch expenses are increased by $52,898.12. Public works expenses are increased by $1,626.74. City engineer expenses are increased by $3,000. Inter-local expenses are increased by $36,750. Transfers to other funds are increased by $20,605. Debt service expenses are increased by $10,090. Business park fund, intergovernmental revenue is increased by $100,000. Land sale revenue is decreased by $15,750. Transfers from other funds are decreased by $67,528. Professional service expenses are increased by $13,242. Debt service expenses are increased by $3,480. Grant fund, local grant revenue is increased by $1,642. Federal grant revenue is decreased by $25,000. General government expenses are increased by $1,642. Police department expenses are decreased by $25,000. Lot sales revenue is increased by $2,774. Intergovernmental revenue is increased by $3,693. Transfer from other funds are increased by $3,693. Cemetery expenses are increased by $10,160. Capital projects fund, transfers from other funds are increased by $84,440. Capital expenses are increased by $84,440. All ordinances or parts of ordinance and conflict disorder are hereby repealed. This audit shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324. Public given it deuced in red for the first time, June 12, 2017.
Thank you. That will constitute first reading, and the sponsors are the Finance Committee members, Ms. Tackett, Mr. Lesby. Also, while Ms. Clark's at the podium, let's see, we have a municipal order approving the liability property and workers' compensation insurance, and through her normal, super-precise pinpoint budgeting, we actually got these renewals in, and they pretty much match what Stacy is projected for the coming year. I have talked with, just so council will know, I talked today with both David Livingston, who has part of the coverage, and David volunteered to be here, and I told him that we had reviewed everything, we've gotten the schedules, and I didn't think it was necessary for him to come. Also spoke with Lewis Wolfe on the phone, he also volunteered to come. I told him I did not think it was necessary. I do want to mention that I know in our, we did not have a couple of good years for workers' compensation, and in fact, Lewis asked KLC to do a pretty in-depth, long-term review of our workers' comp materials, and if memory serves me right, I think in the last six years, they've paid out just over $200,000 more in claims than we have paid in premiums.
They're not happy about that.
They had substantially increased our modification factor, which would have increased our premium, and I think Lewis successfully argued that down by $51,000. So I promised Lewis that even though he wasn't here, I'd give him an attaboy. And same for David Livingston's work on the other insurance, so.
Is there a particular area to start working on the workers' comp to help it, or is that give you those guidelines?
They do, and a part of what we've argued is that Megan has now instituted monthly save, safety meetings in all departments, and we're managing risk more aggressively, and we sold that fact to KLC, that that should have an impact on future claims. Ms. Clark?
An order accepting the workers' compensation liability and property insurance renewals of Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for fiscal year 2018. Whereas the policy coverage begins July 1, 2017, and ends June 30, 2018, and will be appropriated in the fiscal year 18 budget, and whereas the workers' compensation policy has an annual premium of $383,231.56, whereas the liability and property policies have an annual premium of $461,703.25. Now therefore is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the insurance renewals for workers' compensation, property and liability coverage, copies of which are attached and incorporated herein by reference, are approved, and that the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Thank you. There are a motion for approval.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Hurley with the second. And I'll just note that I think the number that Lewis originally got was 420-something thousand, and we got it down to this 380, so it was a significant savings. If there are no questions for Stacy, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Stacy. You're free to go now, if you'd like to.
Why would she leave?
I know, why would she leave this interesting stuff? Let's see, item 10 on the agenda is under the heading of Human Resources, and it is first reading of an amendment to the personnel ordinance that will allow us to hire the two police officers that we just budgeted for, and as a member of the Police Committee, Polly is sponsoring that ordinance.
An ordinance amending Section 2-111 Subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to Increase the Number of Police Officer Positions. Summary, one, amends Section 2-111 Subsection C of the Code of Ordinances with such for the classifications associated pay grades and authorized positions for each department to increase the number of police officer, two, grade six positions from 39 to 41 in the police department. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, several ability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324. Introduced in public red for the first time, June 12, 2017.
Thank you. That will constitute first reading, and we'll finish that up at the next meeting. Under the police department, I believe is in your package, we are surplusing nine cruisers, chief, is that correct? Nine cruisers, and I'm not sure if it's part of this MO or not, our discussions will say you will.
Kind of all the same, we're just letting go.
Oh.
I mean, it's part of the nine.
Yeah, we didn't actually specifically state it, but it's worth mentioning.
Well, just for the council to know, that we're surplusing nine cars, and I've talked with Mayor Christensen from Sadieville. Some of these cars have great useful life left in them, so I've invited Mayor Christensen and some of his people to come look at the nine and told them they could have the best two and take them home with them. So we're going to help Sadieville in that way. We have not yet talked with Mayor Jones, but if that offer is interesting at all to stamp and ground, we'd make that same offer to them.
That's awesome.
Good.
An order declaring surplus property and authorizing the disposal of same by public auction, whereas the property described in the list attached here too and incorporated herein by reference was acquired for use by the designated city department, and whereas the property is in need of repairs exceeding its current value, is not being used by the city and should be declared surplus. Now therefore is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the property described in the attached list is declared surplus property, and the mayor is authorized to dispose of the same by public auction.
Now, that says public auction, do we have to take future action to give these to Sadieville, or?
That's it.
That's it? Is there a motion for approval?
Motion. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
One of them can second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's see, under police department, we have a grant application as well, isn't that right, chief? These are the body armor, is this the body armor grant? Pardon? Bulletproof vest? Yes, and this is, gosh, chief, it's, thank you. This is a reimbursement grant, correct? Okay, we buy it and then we're reimbursed for that amount?
Great.
Half that amount.
Half that amount, yeah, 50%.
Resolution of the City of Georgetown Approving the Application for Grant Funds from the United States Department of Justice and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign All Relevant Documents. Whereas the Georgetown Police Department is seeking permission to apply for the 2017 United States Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant in an amount that will be determined based upon subsequent purchase of bulletproof vests, and whereas the grant provides for 50% reimbursement of the cost of bulletproof vests, and whereas the grant requires that the Georgetown Police Department purchase the vest prior to grant funds being dispersed, and now therefore be it resolved by the City of Georgetown that the Georgetown Police Department is hereby authorized to apply for the 2017 United States Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, provided that pursuant to Municipal Order 14006, council approval shall be required before acceptance of the grant award, and provided that the city shall not be responsible for greater than its proportionate share of the matching funds. The mayor of the city is hereby authorized and directed to sign said application on behalf of the Georgetown City Council, and the Georgetown City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to certify there too. This resolution was approved by a vote of the City Council, City of Georgetown, on the 12th day of June 2017.
I made a motion.
I was looking at the committee.
I'm not saying a word.
Who seconded that?
I don't know.
I made the motion, I can. Do it all.
You got to push straight up the line.
No people think I can, but I can.
She can fry it up in the pan, too.
And put a hat on it as well. Thank you very much.
There you go.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Thank you very much. And the last item on our agenda prior to council comments is the municipal order from the Public Works Department buying a tractor-trailer load of Herbies. And it seems like with growth, we go through a tractor-trailer load of Herbies pretty quickly. It's pretty amazing, but. Oh, also, we, the last day, since we sent your council material out, we've been buying these from our existing supplier through the state bid contract. What turns out, Robert did a little homework and talked to some people in a city where he had done some, been on a site visit, and found that other companies also have a state bid contract, and he was able to save us $2,000 today.
Good.
That's awesome.
Wow.
So this is slightly different from what was in your councilman material, because Robert saved us $2,000.
Good.
We appreciate that, even if it makes us change your packet right the last one.
An order approving the purchase of Herbies for sanitation in the amount of $26,535.80 and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the purchase of Herbies for the sanitation department is necessary to maintain an adequate inventory for new and replacement residential units, and whereas Toder LLC holds state contract MA758-16000561-4 for Herbies, therefore competitive bidding is not necessary, and whereas funds are available in the fiscal year 18 sanitation budget for said purchase, and Herbies shall not be delivered to the City of Georgetown prior to July 1, 2017. Now therefore is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the purchase of Herbies from Toder LLC in the amount of $26,535.80 a quote for which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference is approved, and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Motion for approval. Motion for approval, and pardon with this.
I was just waiting.
I just don't want to get jumped on yet.
You knew it was coming.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One thing that I meant to tell the council during council comments, but Public Works kind of made me think about it. We have been working on the commitment we made to you about streetlights and a comprehensive report about streetlights.
Good.
Brennan has met with KU, I believe, twice now. They're working on drawings and maps. We expect, hopefully by the next meeting, to bring council a map that shows where certain lights can be added pretty quickly, and at what cost. I've also asked that the map address the dark stretches that you all have talked about repeatedly.
Good.
Even though they're on state highways and they require engineering, I want a cost and a timeline, so you all can understand what steps we have to take to start that process.
Good.
So since we made that commitment to you, we've been working, we hoped we could have it tonight, but KU's got so many people on summer vacation right now that we're having a little bit of trouble scheduling with the electric utility to do what we need to do. But we are working on that for you.
Good.
And hopefully we'll have an actionable item before you to add some of these things. And that concludes our part of the agenda. Let's see, where should I start? Mark?
Nothing.
You're good. Connie?
I'm good. Just Saturday was a great thing, that happened that day, so kudos.
Good weather, too.
Thank you. It was beautiful.
It was beautiful.
Yeah, thank you. Karen?
I have two things. One, I left on the council's table about the amateur radio field day, and they have invited all the council members to come out, just show up, make an appearance, say hello to, they're expecting a lot of guests coming into town. So you all have that. And then the other thing I have, I have, everybody likes to talk to me about the cemetery. So one of the issues is, at the cemetery, there's always some theft that happens at the cemetery. But it seems like it's a kind of an abundancy of reports that people are telling me that, you know, the things that they put out at cemetery are disappearing. And I know you can't 24 hours a day be there, but I was wondering if maybe you could talk to Gene, see if there's anything that he could do a little bit. And a few people said that occasionally they were afraid, when it was, you know, twilight, that they were at the cemetery, that they were a little fearful.
Like?
Yes. So actually, I was just wondering if you could ask the police, maybe if occasionally they could just drive through the cemetery. Because he keeps, I think he closes the side gates, but he keeps the front gates open all night.
He does.
And if just occasionally, if they could drive through at dusk, or, you know.
We might want to think about putting a camera coming in.
We might be able to.
You could see, you know, people's coming in, they're not, they're not walking out with the stuff. They've probably got something to put it in.
Right.
So I would, I would think about that maybe.
Several years ago, they stole a bunch of urns, big cast iron, valuable urns.
Well, see, I really had heard, you know, you hear a little bit, but then this year, it has been like one story after another. And so something, something is increasing. At least it's not vandalism, but just taking. But so if the police could have a little presence, maybe Gene could think of something that could, could help out.
Good. Yeah, you know, you know why we keep the gates locked up there?
People are dying to get in.
People dying to get in.
I've heard that.
I was just gonna say, but you're not.
You said it, okay.
Ask me what I got, Mayor.
It's as bad tonight as it was the first time.
You are just.
After that, Mayor, you just skip over me, all right?
That is good enough.
We don't even want to talk about where I live. It's next to a funeral home, so.
That's bad.
I thought it might talk to me.
Actually, I do. Royal Spring Park, you know, you know, where it's taped off. And I always walk there, you know, and looking at it. And it's really eroding. Did they have a timeframe on it?
I don't know what the timeframe is, but it's eroding severely.
It is. I mean, it's.
We're really anxious to, there are several areas that are, the way that wall is undercutting and the erosion, we're anxious to get the scope of work for Phase 1, and what we can do with the tap grant in terms of the biodeuct and other things. We talked at some length today internally, Polly, about, it's not directly Royal Spring Park, but we're doing some deep dives into parking, and what we might be able to do on North and South Water Street to address parking concerns.
Oh, yeah.
Polly, I think that what you're seeing in that erosion, it's a big fix.
Yeah, it is. I mean, you can see all the way down to the wall, and it's pretty separate. And it's just really, in the past four months, that it's just really escalated.
Yeah, we started getting the big holes, and now it's eroding worse. We did have Public Works, Parks, we took a load of gravel, a couple of times we filled in with gravel. But that's in bottomless pit, isn't it?
It is, looks like it.
I had asked Parks and Rec, until we get to the better fix, to continue to put gravel on it, put some dirt over it, and make it as safe as we can. But the big fix is still out there.
Unfortunately, we do that, and literally within a couple of weeks.
I thought so.
I mean, it's a, it's a big problem.
It is.
It's soft at some point.
Have we been in the tree?
It is soft, and there's some water movement under there that we don't understand, and it's taken dirt and stone and stuff.
It's a natural spring.
We will, we will continue to monitor and look at that. Anything else, Polly?
Well, with that said, the right, the other side, the Arts and Cultural Center looks really, really good. They've cleaned it up real well. They've done a whole lot of weed eating and cleanup over there, and that looks really, really nice. And also thank you all very much for the Ed Davis project. It really looks good, and there's a lot of people that are happy about it.
I know the jails, the group that's on the work detail does a lot of weeding throughout this community.
They just did it.
And we really need to thank them for that, because.
They're a lifesaver for us.
And they're actually doing the state road, part of the state roads, but it really looks great.
They did a good job.
Anything else come for the council tonight?
Counselor.
If not, we shall stand adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you all very much.